Hello, everyone, and thank you for attending the Longdale City Council for Monday, August 3rd. I'm gonna ask the Assistant City Clerk to give us the roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Osborne?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Here.
All members in attendance.
Thank you, sir. Let's have our flag salute led by Councilmember Daniel Reed.
Very good. Alright, thank you, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilman. We're now on our public safety report. Captain Allen or Lieutenant Leo?
Yeah, it's Captain Allen here.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for July 21st through August 3rd. As we continue to go through the summer, the city's biggest concern is still COVID-19 and its effect on our citizens, city government, and the nation at large. As we move forward, we continue to ask everyone to adhere to the county's health guidelines in order to keep each other safe and secure from this virus. In regards to crime, the city's overall crime rate remains low. We continue to see a decrease in assaults, rapes, burglaries, as well as no homicides this year. As previously mentioned, the city has seen a steady rise in vehicle thefts. After closing a chop shop located near the city of Longdale, vehicle thefts began to decline, and we are beginning to see a slight increase again. I want to remind everyone to ensure that they lock their vehicles and set their car alarm each and every time they leave their vehicles unattended. In regards to Project Room Key, on July 28th, 2020, deputies responded to the smart and final in order to arrest a shoplifter that had been detained by store employees. Upon being contacted by deputies, the suspect ran and a foot pursuit was initiated. The deputies chased the suspect to the Best Western Hotel lobby, where he was finally detained and arrested after a short scuffle. Upon the arrest, it was determined the suspect was a hotel occupant. The suspect was arrested for robbery. There have been no other significant incidents at the hotels. I know during this time, one of the biggest issues was the proliferation and shooting of illegal fireworks. This year is one of the worst on records in the city of Longdale, as well as the county as a whole. I want you to know that I have been meeting with the city manager in order to develop a strategy to minimize this issue for next year. It is a difficult one to solve, but I want you to know that the Sheriff's Department is dedicated to finding and using any and all legal solutions to address this issue. Last, I want the public to know that if they ever call the Sheriff's Department for service and they are not satisfied with the response or results, they can and should call the station's on-duty watch commander in order to have any concerns addressed. The station's telephone number is 323-820-6700. Once again, that is 323-820-6700. This is the public safety report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Captain Allen, for that report. Are there any questions to Captain Allen's report?
Robert, it's Jim. And thank you, Captain, for the report. This question may or may not be answered by you. Maybe it's more for staff. But when we saw the report of the crime and learned that it was one of the Room Key individuals, I think my first reaction was I wasn't surprised, and I think a lot of other people probably thought the same thing. Something that we kind of thought could happen and probably would happen. And after, now that it has happened, I'm wondering, was there any contact from anybody, either the sheriffs or city staff, to county personnel, to any of the reps who've been overseeing Project Room Key, for, you know, a response or an explanation or an apology even for bringing in someone to our city as part of their program, a county program, who then commits crime within her city? In other words, the criminal element, obviously. I just wonder if there was any contact with the county and if there was any response?
Yes, Councilmember Osborne, this is Kevin Chen, city manager. Immediately after we got the report about the arrest, I asked that our municipal services department immediately contact both LASSA, who is operating the hotel, as well as county representatives to ensure that that individual was no longer, was essentially expelled from the program, and to ensure that that individual was no longer in Longdale. So we didn't, you know, we didn't so much get an apology from them, but we certainly made a demand that that individual no longer be part of Project Room Key or in Longdale. And my understanding, and Michael Reyes can add to this, but my understanding is that that person is no longer at the hotel and hasn't been back since.
Well, thank you, Kevin. I did see, probably it was an email, that that was the decision, this individual would not be returning. I did see that. But it sounds like we didn't get any sort of apology or anything from the county. And I would suggest, anybody who's a critic of this program out there as a resident, fire off some contact to our supervisor's office. Mark Curley Thomas should hear about this. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other questions of the public safety report? Okay, I want to thank you, Captain, for your report. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Let's move on to oral communications. Does the city clerk have any oral communications for us?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. You have nine public comments, and I'll go ahead and start reading the data. First one, Gary White, Longdale resident. On June 23rd, a man shot out my car window with a BP gun. I looked over my fence and seen him walking away. I caught the young man, and he pulled a gun and pointed it at me. The gun looked like the real gun. I took it away, I took the gun away from him and told him to get down and called the sheriff. The guy got up and ran away from me. I followed him while waiting for the sheriff. I was told I didn't see him actually do it, so it was hearsay. I told the deputy he admitted to me. My real main concern is the young man pulled and pointed a gun. This could get him killed. He was wearing a red City of Longdale hooded sweatshirt. I hope someone can help him before he is hurt. On August 2nd, I heard a car crash. I called the sheriff. A car drove by and gave me their phone number and license number of what they said was the white SUV that hit the parked SUV. This was a hit-and-run. The witness said the driver appearing, appeared to be swerving. They hit a parked SUV. It could have been a person. I was told, I only heard it and didn't see it, so it was hearsay. Second one, Barb Clark, Longdale resident. While parking enforcement tickets resume Monday, August 3rd, it's still a very difficult time for many of our residents. I understand the need for the city to collect funds to support various programs, most of which are canceled. But people can barely pay their rent and rely on food banks for food. I have a couple of suggestions. First, be lenient. Second, give a warning. Third, if you must issue a ticket, do it for a very reduced rate of $10 and give them extra time to pay. My daughter was picking up her kids from my home, and her car was slightly over the sidewalk for two minutes, and she got a ticket two weeks ago. That wasn't right. Thankfully, she was able to pay it, but many others aren't. You could change street sweeping to every other week, thus reducing the chance for residents to get a ticket. Many other cities around us don't even have street sweeping, and they seem to be doing fine. The city can also ask each resident to provide license plate info for all their vehicles. If you don't see the same, if you don't see the same one that doesn't belong, take it. All I'm saying is there is a way to work out this problem. Please give one of my ideas a try or ask for other ideas and postpone another two weeks while residents send in their. Third public comment, Lindsay Pearson, Longdale resident. I'm glad, I'm glad that parking enforcement will issuing tickets to cars parked on the street during the street sweeping days. Someone has parked two cars on the street in front of my house. They haven't moved in three weeks. Also, I would like to see parking enforcement regularly patrol alleys and issue tickets to stationed vehicles. This is a lot, lot of lost revenue for the city. I see cars illegally parked in the alley all the time along 160th and Freeman. Also, code enforcement can issue tickets to people who leave a temporary canopy for more than 72 hours in their front yard. Maybe also provide an email address where we can report illegal construction. I've seen two illegal garage conversions and hear power tools late into the night from neighbors. Fourth public comment, Diane M. Davis, Longdale Chamber of Commerce, fireworks in Longdale. The stands are a vital part of support for youth in Longdale. I know there's the belief that if legal fireworks in Longdale are restricted, that illegal ones will stop too. That's not even close to what's happening, gonna happen if they stop legal fireworks. People will just have more money to buy illegal ones. Nothing will stop illegal fireworks unless they have enforceable consequences to stop them. Public comment number five, Stephanie Escaville. I would like to reach, Longdale resident, I would like to reach out and ask you to please reconsider your decision to resume parking enforcement on August 3rd, 2020. Please note the following in order to better understand the implications that may come from ticketing residents for parking violations. As all, as you all may know, many residents are either currently unemployed or working from home in an effort to help prevent the transmission of COVID-19 in their workplaces. Unemployment in Los Angeles County is at one of the highest points ever, 19.4% as of July 17, 2020. Prior to COVID-19, the city of Longdale was experiencing poverty at a rate of nearly 13.9%, according to data from the U.S. Census Bureau. Though some may argue that the $600 weekly unemployment boost provides minimum wage workers with a higher income, the truth is that an even greater majority have not received these benefits as a result of serious processing delays at California's EDD. Most jobs began to shut down in late March. We are now in August. That would entail five months of no pay. I personally cannot imagine the overwhelming worry that would come from losing my job due to the worldwide pandemic, concern over food and shelter for my family, and to top it all off, being ticketed over parking. The city of Longdale has a responsibility to take care of its residents. We're experiencing, what we are experiencing is unlike anything we have before. And though I am personally grateful for not having to add parking to my list of concerns in the midst of ongoing chaos, I ask that you please consider extending the date for resumption of parking enforcement until the number of COVID-19 cases in Los Angeles County shows a steady decline and the workforce begins to reopen. Thank you for your time and consideration. Six, Matthew Pelz, Longdale resident. My name is Matthew Pelz. I'm a board member for Longdale Little League. Please allow safe fireworks to continue in Longdale. We are, we all benefit from fireworks sales. The city receives state tax revenue, and we get to continue serving our community by allowing kids to play baseball. The income generated from the fireworks stands allows us to purchase uniforms and provide photos for the families of Little League players. We also use the money for school maintenance and upgrades. Allowing fireworks means you're allowing the tradition of Little League baseball to continue in Longdale. Next public comment, Cam London, Longdale resident. COVID-19 cases have risen throughout the state, causing many businesses to close their doors again. Other cities have chosen to extend their more 21 parking tickets. Will Longdale do the same? Our streets have seen an uptick on parked cars since businesses closing. No one much could be tracked in the street, but I have to say, the few blocks around me look okay. I believe people are trying to pick up any trash they may see in front of their homes. I have asked at multiple meetings for the number of sheriffs in Longdale for the 4th of July. How many regular deputies? How many picture black and white cards slash deputies? How many undercover cars slash deputies? I'm asking for real numbers, not some sidelined version. Asked and never answered. I also asked for an update on Room Key and Home Key with regard to Longdale. At one time, the city manager said that he and other managers were planning to meet to get answers. What questions were asked and what were the answers? Are there plans to purchase either motel to become permanent housing for homeless? When the need for housing due to COVID has subsided, how will the current motel residents be removed? Will they be turned out on Longdale streets and become another problem for Longdale to deal with? The city does not have enough law enforcement to deal with the current issues. We are, we are damned if the county dumps these people in our streets. As for how, as for all the new homeless, the fakers, are they people that have been kicked out of the notels for not following the rules? It has been said that the goal is to place the motel residents in permanent housing. We all know that that will be difficult and a long-term process. In the meantime, where will they go when they're asked to leave the notels? Asked and never answered. Next public comment, Randall Abrams, Longdale resident. Today, the city of Longdale is resuming parking enforcement citywide as posted on the street sweeping days, claiming that LA County's favorite home restrictions are being lifted. Unfortunately, many of those restrictions have been imposed against. According to the city of Longdale's website, Governor Newsom's near closures effective July 18th include schools, gyms, personal care services, and places of worship. The numbers in Longdale peaked significantly in July. On June 30th, there were 200 total cases in Longdale. On July 31st, there were 458 cases. There were 258 new cases, obviously more than double the number of cases previously, and on the way, hit 500 by the end of this week. Neighboring cities of Redondo Beach, Hermosa Beach, Manhattan Beach, and Torrance all have lower case rates. Hawthorne does have a higher case rate, a city that coincidentally also allows safe and sane fireworks. While Manhattan Beach and Hermosa Beach are imposing strict mask requirements with potential fines, Longdale with higher case rates than both those cities is not only taking no action, but forcing residents to play the Longdale Parking Shuffle. Los Angeles and friends have decided to not enforce street sweeping. With the majority of passersby is not wearing masks on the street, the moving back and forth to parking is not only an inconvenience in this pandemic, but it places residents at risk. Keep in mind that the county website does not list specific locations in Longdale where there is an outbreak of cases. COVID-19 in Longdale appears to be spreading equally throughout the city. Will this city take any action to reduce its spread? It would appear Longdale's concern for a few leaves on the street overrides a concern for health and safety of its residents. The trade-off could be that those parking on the street must be willing to blow out debris from under their cars, and I have witnessed this happening. Street sweeping enforcement should be delayed until Longdale's case rate is under better control and the spread is controlled. The health and safety of our residents should be top priorities. Last public comment under oral communication, Johnny London, Longdale resident. Apparently, the city of Longdale has used COVID-19 as another way to censor residents. People read at different speeds, therefore, the 500-word limit to comments is inappropriate and dismissive to residents and their ability to voice their concerns. When a person has a time limit, they do their best to practice in order to stay within that time. Either the city needs to find a way to allow residents to speak to themselves, or the city needs to allow the residents their three-minute time, not limiting to someone's ability to cold-read statements. We did not make COVID. Our voices should not be assigned to the COVID. That ends public comment.
Okay, excuse me. Thank you for those reading the public comments. Let's see if we have any comments from the council. Let's start with Councilmember Osborne. Any, any comments concerning the public comment?
I have none.
Okay. Councilman Reed?
Yeah, just a couple of comments in regards to street sweeping. You know, I want to reference that as income for the city. That's not its purpose. It is to get folks to move their vehicles, which we do have a problem with that. And cleanup is a problem, though we'll have to see how it rolls, and then take that back at another time. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Suarez?
I'll, I'll be last.
I think you skipped.
Okay, Councilman Peck.
No, it's okay. Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Just a couple of things. I agree with Dan about the parking tickets. It's one day a week you gotta move your car. And it's not that hard. We all got an email from an individual who has five adults in their house. These five adults can move their own cars one day a week. I think it's, it's not about the money, it's about the appearance of the city. And also to the last speaker about comparing Longdale COVID cases with Torrance and Hawthorne, look at the population in those two cities. And with that, I'll just pass it on.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Suarez?
Yeah, I, I mean, I have very little to add as well, but with regards to cases, it's not always, it's not always comparable to the surrounding cities. There's a lot of other factors, such as density, something that our city has to deal with. And given the example too, my own household, I have a family, my parents, there's five individuals, and four of which are essential. So, yeah. My input, I'll pass it along.
Breaking up.
Yeah, breaking up just a little bit there, but we, we got you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just want to add the, the street cleaning as well. One of the, the writers, speakers rather, asked us to look into, I guess, several options, one of which was every other, every other week. I think that might be something that we might can take a look at after we get the streets cleaned. I mean, right now, it's definitely imperative that we clean some of these streets that have not been cleaned in, in weeks, months, you know, since we rested our street cleaning efforts. We need to get those streets cleaned. Then perhaps we can, can visit some other ideals, especially if we go into a full, complete shutdown. I am open to looking at some, some other ideals, such as every other week or what have you. But one speaker brought it point-blank when you talked about sweeping in front of your homes. This is something that I've been, have encouraged people to do from the start. And although my street is pretty, you know, we, we have a pretty clean street on my street, I can't say that to be the same for a lot of streets in Longdale. Being one that, that walks the streets pretty often, I put a lot of miles on my shoes for, for exercise. And I tell you, there's a lot of streets that for some reason, people don't take the time to sweep in front of their homes. Now, I do appreciate those who do, knowing that when we decided to suspend the parking tickets, we said that we were all in this together, and so one of the easiest things that we would ask people to do is to simply sweep in front of their homes. That really has not been done to a large degree, and the city is really getting very filthy. A lot of this dirt is going to the storm drain, and there, after a while, can be a concern about whether or not we are contributing to runoff and could be subject to fines from the, the water, I guess, the Water Resource Board, Quality Control Board. So that's something that we can take a look at, but for right now, I do agree that we should at least get these streets cleaned, and then we can re, you know, regroup from there. And that's all I have on public comments. I want to thank all those who took the time to, to write their public comments. I know it's a little more, little more work writing your public comments rather than having the opportunity to speak them, but I want to thank the speakers who took the time to voice their, their views and their opinions by, by writing them and sending them in. With that, we will close public and oral comments, and comments from the council, and we will proceed with item F, which is our consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
Mayor, Robert, this is Councilman Kearney. I move to approve.
Okay. Well, thank you, Councilman Kearney, who has just moved to approve the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Just Councilman Reed, a second.
Councilman Reed has just seconded the consent calendar. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Right with the council, please vote. Let's have the vote, Mr. Assistant City Clerk.
For the consent calendar, Mayor Pro Tem Suarez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's move on to item number five under administration concerning the Legal California City Conference. Basically, we're looking for a recommendation of those who would like to serve as a delegate, you know, alternate delegate for this year's conference, which would be, of course, remote.
Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney.
Yes, sir.
I'll do it again. Nobody else wants to.
Okay, Councilman Kearney will do it again. Okay. We have Councilman Kearney. So you would serve as the voting delegate?
Correct.
Okay. And do we have anyone interested in serving as the alternate?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Reed. I can do the alternate.
Okay, Councilman Reed can do the alternate. Okay, so I have on Councilmember Kearney wishing to do the, the voting delegate, and Councilman Reed as the alternate. Are there any, any challengers? Okay, okay, without any objection, I can take this by unanimous consent. Correctness, Madam Attorney?
Sure.
Okay, without objection.
I believe that there's a funding component to this.
Okay.
Oh, there's not money budget for this?
No, you guys, we should go to the plan.
I thought we had to transfer the money, but that means we need to have a motion on that, right?
Yeah, there's an appropriation. We should have a vote.
Yeah, yeah, let's have a vote since we got to transfer some funds. Okay, who wants to make a motion? I, I assume that Pat Kearney wants to make the motion.
I will, I'll make a.
Okay, and, and, okay. Then I'll second the motion. Motion made by Pat Kearney and seconded by Paul Miles, that we appoint Pat Kearney as the voting delegate for the Legal California City, and Councilmember Daniel Reed as the alternate delegate for the, the conference, and the appropriate funds would be transferred from the city council discretionary funds into the travel expense account to cover the conference. Is there any discussion on the motion in the debate? Okay, seeing that, I'm gonna ask the Assistant City Clerk to give the vote.
For item number five, Mayor Pro Tem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, sir. Item number six is an ordinance related to a municipal citation, and that's here, the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. Tonight's staff report is the first reading to introduce four considerations in an ordinance to make all violations of the municipal code subject to administrative citation. Administrative citations were first discussed at the March 16th city council meeting prior to the shutdown caused by the outbreak of COVID-19. The purpose of this staff report is to introduce language into the Longdale Municipal Code, which will make all existing municipal codes citable. The attached ordinance adds a new chapter, 1.11, to the city code to authorize and establish the procedures for the issuance of administrative citations. As established in the March city council meeting, code enforcement officers begin new cases with inspections to confirm and document violations of the municipal code and issue notices of violation to the responsible parties when violations are observed. A second and then final notice are issued every two weeks of successive non-compliance, followed by a scheduled office conference with a paralegal from the city attorney's office. If compliance is not met after these steps, the case is then turned over to the city attorney to begin court proceedings for criminal prosecution. This process is how all code cases are handled regardless of the level of violation. This is very effective for large cases involving building and safety violations, but can be seen as heavy-handed for smaller violations such as trash cans being left out or for parkway and landscaping issues. Administrative citations will allow code enforcement and animal control officers the ability to motivate violating parties into compliance without the lengthy and costly process of filing criminal proceedings. Administrative citations will allow staff to introduce a financial driver to responsible parties who fail to comply with City of Longdale ordinances. Smaller violations such as inoperable vehicles on driveways, overgrown vegetation, graffiti, et cetera, will become citable offenses. Basically, the use of administrative citations will be like introducing a fourth, fifth, and sixth step into the existing municipal services protocols, with all other steps remaining constant. Administrative citations will be processed through the processing center, just like parking citations, and the responsible party does have the right to appeal an administrative citation similar to the process by which parking citations are appealed. Staff is working to create an ad hoc hearing commission that will hear appeals for administrative citations issued for violations of the Building and Safety Code. But until one is formed, hearing appeals will proceed with the hearing officer mediating and ruling on hearings. In addition, staff is requesting some direction from the city council on policy as to whether or not charge late fees. As currently written, proposed code section 1.11.080 authorizes the city to charge penalties for late payments. Penalties for unpaid citations can accrue as a percentage of the original amount, up to 100% of the original fine. The presented penalties are consistent with the city's current conservative fine schedule that mirrors the assessment and escalation of fines. that mirrors the assessment and escalation of fines as criminal infractions. One hundred, two hundred, and five hundred dollars for first, second, and third violation respectively. Staff feels that the introduction of administrative citations will be cost-effective and will demonstrate to the courts that the city has used every means at their disposal to rectify a violation prior to proceeding with criminal charges. Staff recommends that city council approve the first reading to introduce ordinance one one seven four dash twenty, which will make all violations of the municipal code subject to administrative citation, and seeks direction on how interest not to exceed a hundred percent of the original fine should be given, if at all. We could not charge penalties for late payments. We could charge a flat fee as a percentage in the ordinance, or charge a late fee that is a percentage of the total fine plus any assessed penalties. I can now answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you for that report. Um, are there any, um, questions of the, um, the staff report?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just to try and, we do have, uh, public comment, I can read those at the time if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, let's, okay, let's go with, with the, um, public comment.
Okay, there's three public comments for, uh, item, uh, G six, first one, Randall Abrams, Longdale resident. The implication, the implementation of the proposed, uh, administrative citation program has the potential to improve many unsightly conditions and unpermitted construction in the city of Longdale. As the staff report indicates, the current system only allows code violations to linger on indefinitely. The goal of any code enforcement action is for quick complaints with any violation. This program should easily speed up the process when the person cited knows that there is an immediate financial impact should they fail to comply. Currently, in many cases, compliance is delayed by the cited individual until the last minute when it goes to court. This is an equitable, equitable program and has one, is only fined until adequate time and two notices have been provided. The initial fines are more than fair and appropriate and inappropriate appeals processes built in. If all fails, there is still the ability to take the violated to court. Although some revenue could be generated from this much fine, this program could save a significant amount of legal fees due to reduce, the reduction in court appearances. However, what is most important is that the program could speed up the process of code violations, quickly close open cases, and overall improve the appearance of the city of Longdale. This is an important new program for the city of Longdale. Uh, second public comment, Pam London, Mon- Longdale resident. Finally, some of you may remember that I have suggested this in the past. Longdale needs to have a standard for property owners to follow in order to avoid some of the cosmetic code violations that exist. This should be used as a teaching tool. The city has a window and need a permit sheet that needs revision, why not a property standard sheet? It is past time that Longdale considers ways to get property owners in check. Hitting them in the pocket is likely to reach their sense of accountability faster than the failure of court threats currently used, not to mention the reduction in attorney fees. Reading this section, I find a lot of issues that should be considered. When the city is called out for ticketing a parked vehicle in front of, in, in the front yard setback, they say they can only issue one every twenty-four hours. I believe after the initial contact with code enforcement, no response to correction within two weeks, citation and fine should be levied, because you're dealing with hard-headed, repeat offenders. There should be automatic citations for future code violations at the same address moving forward. Tickets for, tickets issued for illegal activity, weed to your knees, for example, are legitimate. There should never be a dismissal or reduction in the fine. If the code infraction has not been corrected, it would be a criminal for anyone to charge, reduce or dismiss a fine. That's plain crazy. What could be the reasoning for such an act? Just as with parking tickets, continued refusal to correct the cited infraction should lead to higher fines and unpaid parking tickets. The issuance of additional citations on top of that which has been used prior, with the cost raised per citation will further express the city's desire to hold property owners accountable. The city is faced with financial shortfall. The city has chosen to further restrict the code enforcement officer's ability to address complaints. We no longer have a part-time weekend code officer. Currently, one officer is working Sunday through Wednesday, the other Wednesday through Saturday. Planning department is only available Monday through Thursday. Not only have you changed their longstanding work schedule, which could in turn raise childcare, lack of family time problems, you've created a backlog of time needed, time with planning to effectively get the info to start or open a code case. The citation process has been needed forever in the city. You are finally moving in the right direction. During the evil entity days, it was commonplace for her to say they had more than three hundred open code cases at any given time. I don't know how bad it is today, but I imagine it's probably worse with the court closures. Help the code officers to be more effective, help take the pressure off of their backs. After the initial contact starts the citation, however, lots of, two weeks from the initial contact is more than enough time either to either correct the problem. Next public comment, Johnny London, Longdale resident. Maybe now would be a good time to add the residential property inspection program. As my wife said, this is Longdale's chance to reduce attorney fees and at the same time clean up the city. It has been suggested for many years. That program sets a standard and could also assist in reducing the number of citations over time. No matter what one of you thinks, sites report that the program works. This is a city with more than seventy percent rentals. Property owners need to be held to higher standards in order to prevent rentals continually being, uh, being a drag on property values. When a property is on the market and the surrounding homes have broken fences, peeling paint, weeds to your knees, it is a problem. It is a detriment to the seller. Fires are hesitant to pay market value next to a property that appears to have negligent owners. So, yes, it does affect property values. There was a time that Longdale had four code enforcement officers. The city was divided into quadrants. The city had a fifth on weekends. Under someone else, the city failed to increase pride and ownership. Instead, rentals rained, screened, and rundown was the standard. Don't allow poorly maintained properties to be the standard. Make Longdale great again. Maybe then you'll earn the moniker heart of the South Bay. The bond starts with you. That is public comment for item.
Okay, thank you for reading those public comments. Okay, are there, um, are there any, um, discussions on the, um, the staff report? I'm sure we're, we're going to speak.
Robert, this, this is Pat?
Yes, Senator.
Okay, I think the infraction should be raised to two fifty, five hundred, and a thousand, not one hundred, two hundred, and five hundred. I think we're gonna go after, we may, we need to be in business. I think you raise infraction fines to, I guess, two fifty, five hundred, and a thousand. The staff report's a hundred, two hundred, and five hundred.
Mayor, if I could, this is Tiffany Israel, the city attorney. The, that, we'll have to come back to you with an actual fine schedule. That was just a suggestion, but we'll take all your comments on that for feedback to prepare something. Thank you.
Okay, so that'd be adopted, um, later, Councilman, the actual schedule on itself?
Correct.
Okay, uh, okay, got it.
And then also the, uh, suggesting, um, the, uh, penalties, late payments. I like, uh, number three, a late, a late fee will, that is a percentage of the total fine plus assessed penalties. If you read down the bottom of your, uh, thing, it says, do not charge penalties for late payments. Charge a flat fee as presented in the ordinance, or I like the third option, charge a late fee. There's a percentage of the total fine plus assessed penalties. That's my, my thing.
A late fee not to exceed a hundred percent of the original fine, is that what you're reading?
Well, at, at the very bottom, uh, it says recommendation. They gave you the three choices. I don't know if it's three choices or we adopt one of those. Jeffrey, did you know? Michael?
Charge a late fee to.
Right, you cha- charge one of those. And actually, um, there's a slight typo in the report. The option three that you just suggested is the one that's actually in the draft ordinance, it's attached.
Okay, yeah. I like that, I like that one, but.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. And, uh, you know, obviously, repeat offenders, the percentages of anything later not handled would be much higher.
Yeah. Good to me.
Okay, can you go over the, um, the part that talks about, um, I guess it's on page, page two, when responsible parties fail to pay the administrative, the ACOO administrative, um, citation fines, um, a lien can be recorded against a property or the responsible party. I think the responsible party portion means that it would be sent to collections if it's not a property, um, issue.
Well, if it's not a property owner, so if it's a tenant situation or someone who's outside of the city who gets the, the citation, then that's when an unpaid citation could be referred to collections.
Okay, got it. Doesn't that it would be a lien against the property?
Right, when it's a property owner violating the code, that's what would happen.
Okay, okay. Now, after the, um, does that mean after the, uh, let's say that there's a lien that's, um, levied against a, against a property for, um, violation? Once that violation is corrected, does that mean in the, in the finest paid, uh, in our finest paid, does that mean the lien come off automatically or is it, or do they have to take some affirmative action to get the lien off?
Yeah, you know, we'll have to come back to council with what that lien process will be. But usually what most cities do is once a year, they take to council a list of all of the unpaid administrative citations and ask the council to, um, approve placing those as a lien on the property. So it's not something usually that's done right away. So there's plenty of time for someone to fix it before it even becomes the lien. And then, once it is paid, the lien would be removed.
Okay. So it sounds like the, the, the major difference, um, in this, um, program is that it gives the, the city more, um, tools rather than relying on the courts to, um, to just automatically to the court, um, if there's no, no compliance. Um, and then, of course, you have to wait to get on the docket and if the docket is crowded, of course, it takes forever to get on the docket. And in some cases, when you get before the judge, the judge can determine, or the commissioner, whoever's sitting it, can, can determine basically it's a, quote unquote, this is my, my word. You know, it's a nuisance and I'd rather be adjudicating, um, a better thing to adjudicate than this, what the, that the city is trying to impose.
Right, that, judges say that a lot, it's not just your words. Um, but right, it, it shortens the steps, because it doesn't have to go through my office and all of our notices and then to court and then the, all the, the court often grants continuances to people when they say they try. And, and also, like you were saying, for a lot of the smaller things, that it wouldn't make sense for it to be a crime anyway. It allows that to just be resolved.
And adding further on that, Mr. Mayor, if I could, um, we do have a number of cases that are for smaller things, such as trash cans being left out, inoperable vehicles in driveways, um, overgrown vegetation, um, that typically the judge is not going to be overly sympathetic to us and it would appear heavy-handed if we take someone to court for something as simple as overgrown grass. Um, so having this step, uh, having these three steps, um, actually will assist us in getting compliance without having to, to go to the courts. And it'll leave, uh, control with the city rather than the county and the courts.
Okay, that's the, since you have your, your, um, trash cans out. Um, under this, um, program is that, what would that be considered? Is that, uh, is that a crime?
Uh, it would be a violation of, of our municipal code, so it is something we could, we could address criminally. Um, but again, it is, it's, it appears heavy-handed, especially when if, if we have seniors or the disabled. Um, you know, sympathies do tend to lie with, with a person that, that's hard on cash or things like that. So having this ability to, to issue citations in order to gain compliance does give us a little more, uh, steps that we can use to motivate the, our property owners to, to compliance. Um, and if, if they fail to comply, that's one more step we can use to convince the judge that, look, we've done everything we can do. We've given notices, we've given citations, we've had office conferences, and only in going to court, the, the, would we take this final last step? So I think it gives us, uh, a few things that, that benefit officers in helping them to, uh, gain compliance.
Okay, well, just thank you for that, um, explanation, appreciate that. Okay, are there any, um, further questions, um, on the, um, staff report on this proposed ordinance? Okay. Seeing, uh, what is the pleasure, um, of this body concerning this item?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Reed.
Councilman Reed?
Uh, making a, uh, recommendation that we accept staff's, uh, recommendations here along with option three there in regards to a future to be seen, uh, fee rates.
Right, okay.
And I'll, so the motion is. Kearney, I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion has been made by, um, Councilman Reed and seconded by Pat Kearney that we approve staff recommendations concerning, uh, the new city ordinance, um, amending the municipal code concerning, um, code enforcement, uh, compliance, and including, um, option, um, three, which is the concerning the charge of a late fee that is percentage of the total fine plus any, well, actually, that's already included in the ordinance. And I'm gonna ask the city, um, first of all, I'm gonna see if there's any discussion of the motion. Okay, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to read, um, ordinance number eleven seventy-four twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Longdale, California, adding chapter one point one one to the Longdale municipal code, establishing an alternate procedure for code enforcement compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'm gonna ask the clerk to give us a roll call on item number six. The vote.
Sorry, Member Reed? Uh, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. Item H is, um, city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Um, I don't have any report or comments for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Item seven is report from the mayor, to the council members, anything you want to share and attend to any meals you may have consumed on behalf of the city. Let's start with, um, Councilman Osborne, okay?
I do, Robert, thank you. I have two things. One, um, some of you might be aware, Contract Cities recently put forth, uh, I guess it was a resolution opposing the county's attempt to defund law enforcement. And I know of some other cities who have done likewise, and I hope there's unanimous consent that we do likewise. This is a terrible move the county is doing, in my opinion. Because you have the triple results of POPS forty-seven, fifty-seven, the realignment, crime is coming back. And then on top of that, they want to defund law enforcement. This is the craziest thing I've ever seen. I, I'm just thinking about this, if, uh, both Harold and Larry were still alive on council, they'd be shaking their heads. They just would think this is, this state is coming crazy. But again, I know several cities in the South Bay have, uh, done the resolutions opposing it. Contract Cities, I don't know if the Cog has, I, I was told they were thinking of it. But I think Longdale needs to do the same thing. So I'd ask that, uh, we ask city manager staff to draft the language, maybe copying something that the Contract Cities put forward. And the second thing, somewhat related, I learned today from a, uh, council member in the city of Torrance, um, they, like every other city in the state, have been affected by the loss of local control, where we see the state just keep railroading their rules and regulations down the throats of the, of the cities when it comes to their planning departments, their housing elements, and so on. Well, there was a group that formed, I guess they actually formed in Torrance. I forwarded the email to the city manager so he would have this information. And they are working to fight back against the state taking away the control of the cities. And, uh, there's a couple of attachments in what I forwarded to the city manager. I hope he can look this over and then share with council. And it's another thing I would hope that we would look at and consider joining. And I think Torrance passed a resolution of support on this already. I was told a couple of other cities may have as well. So those are the two things I think are important to, to the welfare of Longdale and its residents. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's hear from Councilmember Reed.
Uh, I don't have any, much to ask or much to add to that. Uh, I do agree, we should be supporting the Contract Cities pieces on these things. There was pushing back against the state. Uh, we also have, uh, a new attack coming out on, uh, Prop thirty- Uh, we also have, uh, a new attack coming out on, uh, Prop 13. So it's another one to, uh, put on the list to support.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Pet Kearney.
I'll just say I concur with that, Councilman Reed and Osborne on all three of the issues and pass it on.
If, if I could interrupt for a second, Mr. Mayor, do we have time to bring that back, um, on the agenda, the item about defunding the police?
Um, I, Tiffany, I would say for the second thing I suggested, there's, there's probably time to have it agendized. Have the city manager look at it and digest it and then forward what he can to council. Um, I think, uh, the contract city's resolution has already gone forward. Um, I would say the sooner the better on it. I don't know if it necessarily has to be agendized or could it just be unanimous consent?
Well, since it's not on the, um, agenda, we shouldn't have the council take a vote on it.
Yeah, we can't do that.
You, right, we can't do that tonight. Um, so it would be better if we could have that as an item under items from council member or otherwise on the agenda in two weeks.
And, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, this is Kevin Chen. Um, regarding the first item that, uh, city council member Osborne, uh, brought up regarding the, uh, defund law enforcement. Um, I believe that's with regard to the, um, initiative that the, um, county board of supervisors approved, uh, last week. Um, and I believe the name of it is reimagining Los Angeles County. Um, and the effect of that would be to, um, cut the county's law enforcement budget by 10%. And that's not just the sheriff's department, but it's also, um, the court system, um, the probation office, um, as well as the district attorney's office. So it's all elements of law enforcement within the county, which of course would have a, you know, pretty negative impact on cities, um, including contract cities because of those services that are provided for law enforcement. So, um, I, I believe that will be on the, uh, it's intended for that to be on the ballot, uh, I'm sorry, for the, uh, November election. So, um, if that's the case, we do have time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should definitely put it on for the next meeting.
The sooner the, sooner the better. We need to send a message. The board of supervisors, in my opinion, are, we're just playing politics with this issue. And, but they're doing harm. They're doing severe harm to, uh, the region and the cities of the South Bay in particular.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I can also, um, do a little bit of research on the second item that, um, council member Osborne mentioned. And, um, as needed, I, I'll put that on the same agenda item for the council to consider.
Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from, um, I think we were at Councilmember Kearney. Were you, were you finished, counsel?
No, I, I was finished. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Swerres. I'm trying to say it again, pardon me?
I have nothing to add. You can pass it along, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, yeah, just, thanks for the, uh, just going back real quick on, um, revising, uh, whatever it's called, the, um, the initiative, um, for LA County. Um, I'd like to see, and I spoke to the city manager, um, about this, um, a little earlier last week or so. Um, some type of report or analysis in the actual language itself. I mean, I know what the object, the, uh, what their objection is, uh, what they're trying to, um, reach. But I'd like to see an analysis, an impartial analysis from whomever is responsible for doing the impartial analysis. Um, I don't know, um, if it's the attorney general or who, who does that, uh, when it's a county measure. But I would like to see that impartial analysis, um, of, of the, the measure. Also, um, any information from, from the league of California cities, um, as well as contract cities, especially contract cities. I mean, I know their positions, but I don't know, um, how they arrive at the position. Um, so I would like to be able to, at least to understand, um, um, both sides of the, the argument and how contract cities arrived, um, at their, um, positions. Now, I would say, you know, um, such as a former probation officer, you know, probation officer myself, um, I'm principally against it. You know, myself, I mean, it sounds on the street like not the right thing to do. In particular, the, the, the fact that they're, um, if I'm not mistaken, um, they're doing this by, uh, a charter amendment, which I believe that, in my opinion, anytime you do budgeting, um, by the ballot, that never turns out right. Um, in this case, they're not only doing budgeting by the ballot, but they're doing budgeting by amending the county charter. Um, which as you know, once it's, it's set, then to try to move it around as the, the needs arise as what your elected officials are supposed to do, that's going to be really difficult to do if it's passed by, um, amendment to the charter. And that's the part that I'm mainly concerned about. And that's why I want to see the, the analysis that will go beyond, uh, what does it mean to, to, uh, reduce the budget of, of public safety by 10%? What does that do in terms of giving the county flexibility to be able to move the budget around as they need it, um, going forward, should it pass? So those are the things, some of the things that I want to take a look at if I can get a, some type of analysis, um, before we have, um, not necessarily before we vote on it, but just so that I can, to have. And with that, I don't have too much. And I did attend the, um, the regular meeting, actually wasn't a regular meeting, it was a, um, a tour of the sanitation districts, um, our sanitation, um, facilities. And it was actually pretty good. It was a, um, of course, it was a virtual tour, which was in some kind of way, in some ways, it was a little better than having a regular tour because you were able to perceive, you know, some of the properties from the, um, the standpoint of a drone. It took, you know, aerial, uh, photos, um, of some of our treatment, uh, facilities. And so it really gave us a, 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 a pretty good overview of, um, all of our, um, facilities, whether it's the land, um, landfills, um, facilities, or the water treatment, uh, um, facilities. And so that was a pretty enlightening process, uh, there. So that's all I have. And with that, we do have two other items we need to take care of tonight. We have two closed sessions. And I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give, uh, the provisions of the closed session for which we will go under.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council will meet in closed session on two items, as you mentioned. Both are anticipated litigation. The first is pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4 to consider whether to initiate litigation in one case against Best Western Plus South Bay Hotel, the Baymont Inn and the County of Los Angeles. The second is also pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4 um, to consider initiating litigation in one additional case. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. With that, we will go into closed session at 7:29. So we will, we get into closed session. Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give a report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met in closed session on two items as agendized as items J eight and nine regarding anticipated litigation. In both matters, the city council was updated. There is no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Um, it's now time to adjourn. The next regular scheduled meeting of the city council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, August the 17th. Um, it is now 8:08 and this council meeting is adjourned.
Before you go.
Okay.
Aren't you supposed to close in two, memory of two people?
I don't have that information in front of me. Do you have it?
Well, I know one was Jim Scottini, was a long time, uh, travel club member.
Say his name again?
Jim Scottini, I think you know.
Oh, Scottini, yes, yes.
And I can't remember the other one.
If you give me, um, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, if you give me one second, I can pull up the names for you.
Okay.
Okay, then we're adjourned both of them. I remember Jim.
Yeah. And I have, we haven't got any information on his service.
The other one was somebody outside Longdale or.
Yeah.
Deal with.
Uh, so, so the first one, um, well, uh, the, the other one is for the, the mother of Mayor Garcia of Long Beach.
Yeah, that's.
Um, and I believe her name was Gabby Elena O'Donnell.
Right.
Okay. So we adjourned her, her, uh, member as well. Okay, is that, is that two or three? Two, okay. Okay, so we're, we're adjourned both their, uh, members now.
All right.
I pray that with their families.